It has been on seven twenty-nine for three minutes.
I'm in watching. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome here, everyone. And at this time, I'd like to give the opening to Counsel Jake Hebert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I recently sat down with my mother-in-law to ask her questions about how, since her birth in nineteen twenty-seven, what was it like as a child in growing up in Steinbach? What was it like, how Steinbach has changed and how the world has changed since then? Linda Peters was born and raised on a farm off Lone Boulevard, a half a mile east of Steinbach. The attending physicians who came to the farmer, Dr. Schiltzer, and his wife, who also was a doctor. Her father, Peter Reimer Taves, was an established figure in the community, having migrated or immigrated from Russia in eighteen seventy-four. With his first wife, they had thirteen children. One of the children was the mother of Mr. Jake Epp, a former high school teacher, city of Steinbach councillor, and then became member of parliament. Except for the three of the children, the children were all grown up before Mr. Taves' first wife passed away. Mr. Taves' first wife died at forty-eight. Mum's father married a lady born from Russia, who came to Canada in her thirties. This was mother-in-law's mother. Mum, as I call her, grew up with her younger brother, Ernie P. Taves, also well-known in the community. When on the farm, there was a community phone line, and it was noted for people listening into other people's phone calls, the Taves' phone ring was identified as two audible rings. Her father took her to school by horse, sleigh, and buggy. Mr. Taves was a farmer who made his living on the farm till nineteen thirty-eight, when he moved to the village of Steinbach. He sold Mennonite mutual insurance, was a school trustee, and a devoted member of the Klangamint Church. Mum was eleven of age when the family moved. In grade three, she went to a school where civic, where the Steinbach Civic Centre is located, the building we are seated in right now. She recalls that the school was referred to as the White School or Canelson School. Steinbach at the time had a population of seventeen hundred people. In nineteen thirty-nine, she attended grade five and was, which she referred to as the Steinbach Collegiate, the same building where SAC is now located. Later, it became the Steinbach Junior High. Mum recalls that in those early years, there were no airplanes, rockets, computers, et cetera. Much of the travel was still horse-drawn wagons and sleds. At the time, Steinbach became the hub of commerce, shopping hub for the southeast. H.W. Reimer had a big store in the village, a store known as the department store of the southeast. Being the hub of the southeast, people would travel to come here where they were able to buy most items, including frozen fish from the north, shoes, clothes, sleighs, et cetera. Steinbach had very few cars at the time, and those were relegated to the, only the very rich. Horses were the main mode of transportation, and when idle, horses were hitched to the hitching post along Main Street. To visit relatives on the other side of the Red River, or known as Yonseed, was a monumental trip encompassing several days. When the immigrants came to Canada, or to Steinbach, in eighteen seventy-four, and after having survived the first winter, the men of the community had a meeting to discuss moving Steinbach to Mountain Lake in Minnesota, move to Nebraska, or maybe Kansas, where it was thought to be a better weather, and the land was more suited to agriculture. In those days, women were not allowed to speak up in public. However, Mum's great-grandmother, who was known not to speak up, spoke. She addressed those present, stating, "We are not moving. God has provided and given us this place, and he will provide again." She was able to persuade the men and everyone else to remain in Steinbach. It is Mum's impression that, had this great-grandmother not spoken up, Steinbach would not be what it is today. You could say it decided the destiny of Steinbach. Originally, in Steinbach, there was only the Klangamint Church, a church that was not allowed any musical instruments, and the people were, as Mother says, unsure of their salvation. What resulted subsequently was a time Mum called "an infusion of churches." When the Ruslender immigrated to Steinbach, they started the Mennonite Brethren Church, the EMB. The original church was started in a home setting. They were known for their preaching of salvation and being born again. Also at this time was Mr. John Heldemon started the Church of God in Christ, or what is referred to the Heldeman Church. Also, a Mr. Peters and a Mr. Wall came to Steinbach from Mountain Lake, Minnesota, and started the Evangelical Mennonite Church, the EMB. Mum noted that this infusion of churches changed the mental outlook of Steinbach. The Klangamint had no musical instruments. The EMB and the MB had four-part harmony and a piano. That is when music came to the Steinbach churches. Mum remembers the Second World War, nineteen thirty-nine to forty-five. German was immediately dropped from the school. Instead, students were taught and learned patriotic songs that spoke about Canada belonging to Britain. Such songs included "Britain Rules", "The Waves" with lyrics such as "Britons never, never shall be slaves." Anti-German sentiment was prevalent in the school and in the community. In the thirties, England was considered a powerhouse of the world, with many of the countries joining in to form the Commonwealth. In fact, with so many countries joining, it is said that the sun never sets on the British Empire. How was Steinbach changed? Of course, the population has increased from seventeen hundred to date to nearly twenty thousand. We no longer use horses or as our mode of transportation. School buses take children to school. Airplanes make for faster travel. Steinbach has an airport and trucking industry that has enabled Steinbach to continue to be the hub of the southeast. Children, for the most instance, are born on, are not born on the farm, but rather in our modern hospital. Mum is celebrating her ninety-sixth birthday this July. She is sharp and spry as ever. Her memory is outstanding, and the information and genology she can recall is exceptional. She is the first to admit that this world has changed drastically during the ninety-six years. She has seen Christianity aspect of the community waning, for which she is sad. However, she notes that the positive things in life are more to be expounded. Her favorite Bible verses, Lamentations three, verse twenty-two and twenty-three, "Because of the Lord's great love, we are not consumed, for his compassion never fails. They are new every morning; great is your faithfulness." It is noted that God has been faithful and merciful to her, to the citizens of this community, and to the city of Steinbach.
Thank you, Counsel Hebert. Counsel, we have the agenda in front of us, looking for a motion to adopt. Counsel Swexer, second by Counsel Penner. Comments? Call for the question. All those in favor. Opposed, that is carried. If the minutes of June six, twenty twenty-three, regular council meetings start on page one. You've all had a chance to review, looking for a motion to approve. Counsel Hebert, second by Counsel Penner. Any comments?
No comments.
Call for the question. All those in favor. Opposed, that is carried. Are there any business arising from the minutes? Okay, seeing none, we will move ahead. Can see that it is past seven thirty-five, so we'll go directly into the public hearing. We've got six A. This is variance V two zero two three oh four. It's referring to two eighteen Brant Street. It starts on page four of your package. Mr. Warketing, could you please introduce this file?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of counsel. Variance application file V dash two zero two three dash zero four is being applied for by Conrad Penner. The owners of the subject property at two eighteen Brant Street are Penner Auction Sales, LTD. Purpose of the variance application is to permit a front yard fence of six feet in height, whereas the C three commercial corridor zone permits a maximum fence height of three feet in the front yard setback. The business currently has a six-foot-high fence located within the front yard that was installed many years ago. The, as I mentioned, subject property is Zone C three commercial corridor. The subject property is also designated commercial under the city's official community plan. The applicant operates an auction yard on the subject property, which is in existing non-conforming use on this site. The variance application for the fence is being made post-installation, with city records indicating that the fence was originally installed in twenty sixteen. The existing six-foot-high fence around a large portion of the site is shown in the attached sketch. A portion of the fence that is indicated that is applicable to the particular variance is shown in yellow, with the remainder of the fence to the rear of the property in the rear of the building shown in red. Recommendation from administration is that, subject to any new evidence being provided at the public hearing, a council approved the variance to permit the six-foot-high front yard fence for the portion of the yard, or for a portion of the front yard of the property where it currently exists. And secondly, that the approval be subject to the owner providing an approved lot grading plan that complies with the city's specifications.
Thank you, Mr. Warketing, counsel. I'm a little rusty. This is our first public hearing of the year, and I forgot to close the council meeting and open the public hearing. So I'm doing so now. The council meeting is officially closed. The public hearing is open. So we've had our introduction. Mr. Warketing has introduced the file. Is the applicant here today? Do you wish to speak? Okay. Are there any questions of counsel? Okay.
Mr. Penner.
Would you please approach the podium, state your name and your address, and then I will, Counsel Siemens, and you can go ahead and ask.
Hi, I'm Conrad Penner. My address, three two zero three six, Road twenty-nine.
Welcome to counsel. The request here is to approve a variance on a six-foot fence that was put in twenty sixteen. And administration, including the city planner, report, they say that makes sense. One of the things that we're going to be asking for, potentially be asking for, and was recommendation from administration, is to approve this with regards to a lot grading plan as well, because that would, that is part of our city's specifications. When any development happens, you've got to manage the water on your own site. Can you speak to that? Are you planning to do a lot grading plan?
Well, we did one originally when we did the lot grading. So we haven't changed anything since then. I'm not sure if there's something else that needs to be done.
So does the city have that lot grading plan?
Yeah, I believe they do, yeah.
Apparently, we don't have it in stock or in our, in our records, so you'd have to supply that as well.
Oh, really?
Okay, so you're not aware of that, but so you're not, you weren't planning to do a lot grading plan?
We had no plans of it, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Kate, question from Counsel Swexer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And according to the information that we have here, you were sent a letter in twenty sixteen indicating that, that the current fence is not in compliance, and that you were given an outstanding work order. I'm just curious, how come we're sort of, this is, this was not addressed before council, long before reaching this point? Like, as far as, like, when you would receive that letter, did, did you respond to the city, or what was, was the communication at the time?
Yeah, they had applied for a variance several times, and for some reason, it just never got filed. And then just kept getting prolonged.
Just a clarification, was it not, it was not filed by you?
No, it wasn't, no.
Okay, so it wasn't our city staff that was prolonging it?
No, it was our guys. They never submitted in. They filled out the form, and they never actually submitted it, so. And then it just got, you know, lost.
Thank you. Is that?
That answers my question.
That answers your question. Anything further of counsel? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we're looking at that area, if you're driving along the highway, you look at a, you're putting up a six-foot fence, covers the couple of feet going into your property, and you can still see the rest of the property. And, you know, not, not to, but not to be, you know, direct or anything, but, you know, it doesn't look that well coming into the city, and obviously, that's one of the reasons you want a fence. Have you thought of anything other than a six-foot fence that would help beautify that area at all?
We have not, we have not thought of anything else, no.
But you're aware that a six-foot fence will just, people will still look over top because the highway is high, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anything further of counsel? Is there, okay, seeing nothing? Is there anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to this file? I'll ask one more time. Is there anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to this file? Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, open the council meeting. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counsel Swexer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve the six-foot-high fence, with the condition that the approval be subject to the owner providing an approved lot grading plan that complies with the city's specifications.
Do we have a second? Counsel Penner? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On one hand, the, the application is a straightforward one. Our staff reviewed it and say that it makes sense in, with this particular property to allow a six-foot fence. And so I have no issues with that at all. In that sense, it's very straightforward. And it's disappointing that it's taken this long for this to be addressed with the city, because it is, this is actually a really simple process. And so this requirement that, that an approved lot grading plan be supplied, it does need to actually happen. It needs to get done, and that is a condition of the variance here. But for future reference, obviously, it's important to preferably, strongly preferably, apply prior to the fact, even when it seems like a fairly obvious one. And secondly, when receiving notification from the city that something's not in compliance, it does need to be addressed much sooner than this. But on the whole, the, the application is a straightforward one. I have no problem with allowing the existing fence to continue.
Thank you, Counsel. Anything further, counsel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that there has been discussion with regards to it, the looks of the property and as such, but the purpose of this fence is, is obviously for security, not for beautification. And so that's making an assumption here, but the reason the applicant has the fence there. And so it's not with regards to beautification, it's regards to their own security. And as such, I think it is appropriate to have the fencing around their property.
Thank you. Anything further, counsel? Counsel Siemens?
I'll vote in favor of the motion, and I would just like to express also that it is critical that a lot grading plan be, that it is complied with as well. A lot grading plan is, means where they need to manage the water on their own site, basically. And there's also more development happening in that area, if there is. If they don't put a lot grading plan in place, then that might affect the, how the lots drain in that area. So I think it is critical, critical too, and it is part of the motion. So I appreciate that, and that needs to be held to as well.
Thank you. Anything further of counsel? Anything in closing?
No.
Well, counsel, I'll call for the question. All those in favor. Opposed, that is carried. Variance approved. We'll move on to six B. This is variance V twenty twenty-three oh seven. This is referring to one eighty-eight Lund Road. Counsel, this starts on page fifteen of your package. And Mr. Warketing, could you please introduce this file?
Mr. Mayor and members of counsel, variance application file V dash two zero two three dash oh seven is being applied for by Stefan Hodelmann. The owner of the property is one zero one four six nine four Manitoba, Inc. Purpose of the variance application is to permit a residential multifamily structure to have a height of four stories, whereas City of Steinbach zoning bylaw twenty-one hundred permits a multifamily structure to have a maximum height of three stories in the RMD residential medium-density zone. Notices pursuant to the Planning Act have been issued. There is no written correspondence on file with respect to the background on this file. The subject property is designated as residential under the city's official community plan. The immediately surrounding properties in the area are zoned a mix of RMD residential medium-density, RSF residential single-family, and O open space. The application indicates that approximately half of the depth of the proposed basement floor of the structure will be built below grade, resulting in an overall proposed height of the structure to be approximately forty-one point five feet above grade. I have provided some additional background and precedent information for council's information and consideration. At the end of the day, recommendation from administration is for council to approve the variance application, subject to any new evidence being presented at the public hearing.
Okay, counsel, at this time, I will close the council meeting, open the public hearing. We, the file has been introduced. Is the applicant here today, and would you like to speak? Take the podium, state your name and address.
Good evening, counsel. It's good to be back. My name is Stefan Hodelmann. I live at thirty-six one six one Lone Boulevard. As was explained, it's, this file is actually quite technical, and, and, or the cause for the variance is quite technical. So National Building Code actually does not consider the basement a story. And we've built a similar building, for example, the city of Morden, is considered a three-story, because the basement, generally speaking, does not count as a story. For example, a two-story with a basement is not a three-story. But however, the, currently, the Steinbach zoning bylaws don't align with, align with National Building Code. It is my understanding and what I've gathered from administration that with the next zoning bylaw review, that is the intent to align the building code and zoning code. So, yeah, for right now, it's not as much a question about the physical height of it. It's just the definition of whether a basement is considered a story or not. Just on a side note, if there was no units in the basement floor, and it was just storage, the zoning bylaw considers it a zeller, and we're good again. That is permitted. So it's a, it's a super-technical question, and it looks like, it appears that, you know, once that next zoning bylaw review happens, we wouldn't require this variance at all.
Thank you. Okay, counsel, any questions for the applicant? Thank you. Is there anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to this file? Okay. If you want to speak, you can, you have to go to the podium, state your name and your address, and then you can...
I'm Jeanette Isaac from Mitchell.
Okay.
Uh, we own the, can I go ahead?
Yeah, you can go ahead.
Uh, we own the lot next to that, one eighty Lund. And, yes, I have, one question I have is how the, how the parking is going to work. We built a six-plex, and that was all we thought there was room for because of the parking requirements on the lot.
Okay.
I can speak to that. So we actually have approved structural drawings. We've done the whole nine yards as the last holdup. So obviously, we have, we have this engineered site layout and parking and all that stuff approved with City of Steinbach. So for the parking, in fact, there's no variance required. It was just a different lot arrangement, I believe, than the one, the one that you have, and we were able to, without requiring any variances for the parking, do, do this, this project.
Yes, it does state in our, in our package and all our information that the parking requirements have been met by Mr. Hodelmann. So, so I'll ask again, is there anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to this file? Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, we just own the next one, and we're failing kind of close, and now with the ones behind us getting so big, and oh, there's a big one there beside us. So it's just that we, we don't have a good reason. It's just that we don't like it.
Okay. That's fair, fair. But you're not formally objecting? No. Okay, you're just, you're just saying it, it's a little tight, and you don't like it where it is. Okay. Okay. So I'll ask again, is there anyone here with any more comments, questions, or objections to this file? Okay, I'll ask one more time. Is there anyone here with comments, questions, or objections to this file? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing, open the council meeting. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counsel Hebert?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, do we have a second? Second by Counsel Swexer. Go ahead, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Mr. Hodelmann has done a good job of doing his research. I think it fits into the region very nicely. There's a lot of buildings similar to this. May not have basements or basement suites, but I think it's a good fit, and I think it's good for the city as well.
Anything further?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the reason is pretty straightforward. The, even though the height is not that much different than a regular three-story building, because there is a basement unit, then that counts as a fourth story. There is precedent for this. At seventy-one Chrysler Gate, we had approved a four-story, where, again, the main, the one at the bottom was in the basement. And so we've, we've done this, we've done this kind of thing before. It should also be noted in our information here that at the three-story multifamily structure at two sixteen Woodhaven Avenue West of the subject property, that height is thirty-six point five feet above grade. This one would be forty, forty-one point five. And so we're really talking about a five-foot difference between this one and, and one that's right by it there. So I don't see any problem with this. I think it makes sense. So I'll have to go ahead.
Anything further of counsel? Anything in closing?
Nothing.
Yeah, counsel, I will also approve this motion based on the comments that have been said. So we'll call for the question. All those in favor. Opposed, that is carried. Thank you. Have a good evening. Okay, counsel, we have no delegations. We've got, we'll go down to eight A. Reports and recommendations from city manager. This is Windham three-way stop sign request. Mr. Warketing, could you please introduce this file?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This particular matter was first heard by counsel back in August of twenty twenty-two, so it has taken a bit more time to provide a response, as was originally anticipated. However, this particular item is a report related to an original three-way stop sign request filed by a resident of the Hampton Village neighborhood, specifically to request counsel to consider the intersection at Windham Estate Drive and Ashford Lane, which is currently a single stop sign located on Ashford Lane with a, with through traffic permitted on Windham Estate Drive. The request from the homeowner was that counsel consider installing a three-way stop at that location. The city administration asked staff to complete a review pursuant to the city's standard, that it reviews its traffic control device installation throughout Steinbach. And based on that review, it was found that the intersection, that the vehicular traffic volumes were observed to be low. Traffic speeds were well within the posted fifty kilometer-per-hour speed limits. The intersection visibility is excellent in all directions, and the vehicle wait times at the existing stop sign on Ashford Lane was less than fifteen seconds per vehicle. Based on the overall, overall report and the detailed report that is provided within the information package from the city's engineer, administrator, management recommends that no additional stop signs be installed at this intersection.
Thank you, Mr. Warketing. Counsel, how would you like to proceed?
Could I ask, through you, asking questions to administration, is that place structure or that park, I guess, is that installed already? Is that park being used?
The park is being used. The picnic shelter structure was installed late last summer. My understanding is that the place structure that is also intended for the site, that installation for that began this spring. I do not know what the state of its completion is.
And then the other question I have, like, just what, what time of day in the report were these studies conducted? Would it have covered, like, school hours and stuff? Because that is right close to a school, a park. So I guess my question is, part of that would depend on, the usage would depend on? On the time of day?
Yes. In the second paragraph of the attached report on page thirty-six, it doesn't indicate what particular time. However, the standards for traffic monitoring follow the typical details that the city uses for its regular traffic count reports. But the city's engineer indicates the intersection was monitored for one hour during the morning and one hour during the afternoon during peak traffic periods during weekdays while school was in, in session.
Counsel Penner, on page thirty-six, I think it's the seventh paragraph down, it says during these periods were observed traffic? Was that below the speed limit? Was that or below the speed limit?
No, I read it.
Okay, then it's the only negative observation. So that must have been done during school time, like during, during going home, because it says the observation was parents were parking facing the wrong way. So I would assume it was done during the end of school. Okay? Anything further? Counsel, would you like to proceed? Counsel Siemens?
I'll make the motion to deny and follow the recommendations of our, of the city guidelines.
Second by Counsel Hebert. Go ahead, Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, when people request a stop sign, I'm obviously, I always think that they're the ones who are going to be stopping, so then we should move forward with it. But on the other hand, we also have adopted a guideline, and it's, and it's... and it's, and it's been reviewed. Every five years, we review those guidelines for traffic control devices. And we have done our due diligence over time. We've removed stop signs when that has been the indication. We've also added stop signs different places. So I understand the concern here. I think the safety of pedestrians is critical. We have some, a few sidewalks in that area. And this is also, one of the concerns I have with this is it is also an access. If we at some point put an access to the place structure park through that area, then we can look at a stop sign at that point. But I think at this time, since there's no traffic necessarily going across the street there, right there, I think that we should follow the city guidelines and deny.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to start off by acknowledging the hard work that Krista Smith has done in this regard. This has been an issue that's been before counsel for a couple of years now. She has also done her due diligence, and she's done work on getting the park in that area. So my hat goes off to her for the work that she's done. On the other hand, yes, we have a park here. We have a green space. We have the middle school in that area. But as indicated by Counselor Simmons, our administration has done their due diligence in doing account on the traffic, on the pedestrians, and the review does not support further signage. Yes, the safety of our children is foremost and utmost. But in view of the recommendations by administration that a sign, a stop sign in this area is not warranted, I agree with Counselor Simmons that we deny the motion.
Thank you. Anything further of counsel? Counselor Penner?
I will not support the motion tonight. That area is close to school. Many families with young kids. Also, there's going to be a park. And there, there's no crosswalk at that intersection either. I know where would the crosswalk go because there's no sidewalk on the other side. But kids still do need to cross who live on the other side. I think this is a little bit of a unique circumstance. I see this, it's a bit of a similar situation with SCS, Steinbach Christian School, asking for a crosswalk on the number 12 every time the study's done. Well, the numbers don't warrant it, but at the same time, it would make sense to have one because it's by a school. So I just think we should take extra care in this situation. And it makes sense to put a crosswalk, to put a crosswalk there based on location to the school, based on the number of families, and based that there's, there's going to be a park that's going to be used by kids. So I'm a lot, support the motion.
Anything further, counsel?
I think, just to address, the request is for a stop sign, not a crosswalk. So would the friendly motion be, or a friendly amendment potentially would be to put a crosswalk there as well? Although they are asking for a stop sign.
I, I wouldn't want to accept that amendment without getting feedback from administration on that, so.
I appreciate the comments from Counselor Penner. And I think once we, that area gets developed a bit more, and there will be a crossing that continues on the other side of that intersection, then I, I believe then we'll have to do something that would warrant it more so. But at this point, I think we need to deny.
Well, Counsel, this is a, this is a, it's a tough question because it is public safety. There are the safety of kids involved here. I do travel that area a lot. And I would have to say, at this point, what I see, it probably doesn't warrant any action at this time. But I think this has to be on our radar. And as we have a connection through there, and there is a playground that's going to be used, I would like to see something happen there, whether it is a stop sign or a crosswalk. But something has to be made safer for the children once that, once that is fully developed. And, and where that is, maybe we should bring it back and look at it in, in, in next spring after, after things are, then we would have some, we'd know how many kids are exactly going across to play at the, at the, at the camp, at the, at the park and that. At this point, I would say it could stay unsignalized. But I think down the road, I think we should be looking at this because I think it's, it, it, it could, it could cause some safety concerns. Call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Nine, administration, accounts payable on back of the book. All had, we've all had an opportunity to review, looking for a motion to approve. Counselor Hebert, second by Counsel Simmons. Any comments?
No comments.
Call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. We have 9B. This is bylaw 2228. This is plan of drain, is referring to 35105 Road, 36 North. Counsel, today we'll be doing, it just says first reading in our agenda, we'll be doing first and second reading. Mr. Workteen, could you please introduce this file?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of counsel, bylaw 2228 is a bylaw to authorize the opening of a drain plan, which is located just north of the intersection of Lowen Boulevard and Old Tom Road in Steinbach. And it does form part of a redevelopment proposal of a residential neighborhood by a potential developer within the city of Steinbach. Recommendation from administration is for counsel to give this bylaw first and second reading, which would designate the existing portion of the Manning Canal Drain, which forms part of this phase of the development, and proceed with that bylaw through the approval process.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Workteen. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Penner?
Motion to approve.
Second by Counsel Swexer. Go ahead, Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's very important that when we're building, when developers are building infrastructure, that they're building good infrastructure that will be around for hundreds of years and not underwater. So they need to move that water somewheres.
Anything further?
I can't argue with that. I'm convinced.
Yes, Counsel, this, this drain, the, for the, for this area will improve the drainage so significantly. I think it'll take care of the drainage problems we've been having at that corner. And looking forward to the development, looking forward to the, the whole water problem being, being rectified. So, yes, I will support the motion. Call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. We'll go directly into second reading. Looking for a motion to approve. Counselor Penner, second by Counsel Hebert.
No comments.
No further comments needed. Thank you.
Call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. We've got 9C, the 2023 PSAP adjustments. Mr. Workteen, could you please introduce this?
Mr. Mayor, the city's 2023 financial plan was approved by city council on March 21st, 2023. The city's financial auditors for, or the city's financial auditors have recommended that an additional version of its annual budget adjusted for PSAP requirements or Public Sector Accounting Board requirements be adopted each year. The PSAP-based budget is attached. It's provided on page 43. It's fairly short. But it does incorporate the key adjustments for financial reporting that ultimately will become part of the city's 2023 financial statement and reporting. Recommendation from administration is that counsel approve this 2023 PSAP adjusted budget.
Thank you, Mr. Workteen. Counsel, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Swexer, motion approved?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve.
Second by Counsel Penner. Go ahead, Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, is noted here as just approving this budget based on the PSAP requirements. And so it makes sense to go ahead with it.
Anything further?
No.
Anything further of counsel? Anything closing?
No.
Call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Okay, counsel, 9D on page 44. We've got the business licenses. Looking for a motion to approve. Counselor Hebert, second by Counsel Hebert.
No further comments.
Okay, we'll call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed, that is carried. 9E, building permits. Counselor Susan Penner?
Motion to approve.
Second by Counsel Swexer. Go ahead, Counsel Penner.
I always enjoy looking at the building permits. What's really great about this month is that there are 24 single and two-family units coming up. Prior to that, the total was 12 for the year so far. So this really triples single and two-family units. So that's really encouraging to get that going. And based on our strong commercial year, I'm assuming, you know, single family, that's going to start catching up as well because as people come to our community to work and live, they'll, they'll need places to live. So that's really encouraging. And another thing to take note of is the hospital parking lot expansion is on its way. So that's going to be really appreciated and known by that neighborhood as well.
Thank you very much. Anything?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Counselor Penner. It's good, it's good to see such a strong residential permit, a strong number of residential permits being, being awarded here and combination of single family and duplex here.